Leave soon.
Thank you. Larry, you hear about Jesse Vandross?
Yeah, that's my cousin. Go on, go on.
Yes, she is.
I miss those crazy jokes she be sending out on Facebook.
Mayor and Council want to let you know we are now live on YouTube as well.
Thank you so much.
Pat, you need to smile.
Welcome, William.
Ma'am, I hope you're doing well.
I am. So good to see you.
I want to see you and I can't.
It's so good to be seen.
Absolutely. I'll remind everybody, we're live and we're counting down. We're now at three fifty-seven. So we'll be starting momentarily. I even have a gavel here. I've forgotten about.
I'm just amazed we were able to get Mr. Henry off the tractor this afternoon.
I'm happy we did.
Kane. You know, as long as you're on a tractor, it's it 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 extends your life expectancy. So I try to stay on the tractor as much as I can.
Does fishing help with that too, Mr. Pat?
What's that?
Does fishing help with that too?
It doubles your life expectancy.
Even if you have somebody else bait your your hook.
My grandfather turned ninety-three this week and he fishes a lot, so that explains it.
That I guarantee you had a lot to do with it.
He fishes off of a tractor.
He spent a lot of time on the tractor, too.
Hello, everyone. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Navin.
What is what is the dishonorable Pat Henry doing on this meeting?
I came so we'd add some intellect to the group.
Definitely didn't get any there with me and Alex.
That's why I came. I knew that you and Alex would be there. We need a little, you know, little, little brain power.
Davis, I'd just like to know where you got a haircut.
What are you doing in this meeting?
You don't you don't think business is open for haircuts today. I didn't. You didn't have to know when I got it. Ma'am, if you're gonna have to keep Mr. Navin under control, we're gonna be here all. Well, William, all you have to do is go ahead and switch the order of business call mine and I will gladly get off this meeting.
Good evening. It is four o'clock on Monday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty. And I am happy to invite all of you to participate in this meeting of the Conway City Council, and we are officially open. If you will join me in a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this opportunity to meet. We thank you that you've given us a safe means with which to handle the business affairs of the city. Please bless us and keep us, keep us safe. Remind us that your way is the way and that we should always seek your guidance. We ask that you prepare us for servant leadership and that we try our best to keep self as far away as possible. These things we ask in your name. Amen. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda as it is set forth. Is there a motion? Mr. Miss Goldfinch.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as outlined.
Mr. Hyman, I believe your hand was up. You want to say?
I would second the motion.
Thank you so much. We have a properly seconded motion to approve the agenda. All in favor with a show of hands, please. However, you might show them, and I think that that is unanimous. Thank you so much. And now relative to the consent agenda, what is the what is the will of the council? I will then move that we also, Ms. Tims, I'm so sorry. Ms. Tims, I think you're muted.
All right. Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second? I'm not sure who is first, Mr. White.
I second the motion.
We have a properly seconded motion then to approve also the consent agenda. All in favor with a show of hands, please. And that motion carries unanimously as well. Next on the agenda is special our special presentations under item five. Item five A is a proclamation for National Safe Boating Week that I have prepared. And it's rather brief. I will read it for your hearing and hopefully for those people who are who are tuned in. This proclamation comes from the Office of the Mayor of Conway, South Carolina regarding National Safe Boating Week. Whereas, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty marks the beginning of National Safe Boating Week, instituted to promote recreational boating safety. And whereas, more than one hundred million Americans enjoy boating as a popular recreational activity. And whereas, dangers related to drowning cause over six hundred deaths annually and are inherent in boating unless boaters consistently practice accepted safe measures while boating. And whereas, safe boating practices include wearing life jackets, carrying emergency distress communications equipment, participating in safe boating classes, participating in free boat safety checks, and navigating boats only when sober, minimizing poor judgment and human error that result in boating accidents, serious injuries and deaths. And whereas, National Boat Safety Week is a time earmarked for the annual campaign by the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners to encourage safe and responsible boating exploration and enjoyment of America's beautiful waters. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the week beginning Saturday, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty, is National Safe Boating Week in the city of Conway, South Carolina. Conway's residents and visitors alike are encouraged to enjoy boating locally and to avoid accidents, injuries, and fatalities by practicing safe, responsible boating practices. And witness whereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Conway, South Carolina to be affixed on the sixteenth day of May, two thousand twenty. It is signed by yours truly and attested by the city clerk. That is just for information. Item seven is next on the agenda. I'm sorry, item six is next on the agenda, and it is for public input. Madam clerk, just thinking of your name reminds me.
There's a five B and five C as well on the agenda. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. And before we go there, thank you so much. I I do have trouble reading when I'm not sitting in human company for whatever reason, but I do need to go backwards and and certify with the clerk that we've met all the requirements of the Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, we have.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And all members of the council are present, and therefore we do in fact have a quorum. Under special presentations, item B is a discussion on a request to rezone approximately one hundred fifty-one acres of property located between Highway five oh one Business and Depot Road, P I N three, six, seven, zero, 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 one, one, from forest agriculture to mineral mining flexible district. We'll hear from Ms. Hyman.
I guess, Madam Mayor and Council, this is a request for mining on this property. And the way that the U D O addresses mining is this parcel's already zoned F A and mining is a conditional use allowed in that district. However, the U D O requires that any request for mining comes before Planning Commission and City Council, similar to a rezoning request as a mineral mining flexible district. Therefore, it's before you tonight. And tonight is just a discussion workshop item for for council's discussion. Jamie McLean is also on the call, who is the applicant for this request and can answer any questions that you may have. This was heard by Planning Commission. One concern that was brought up was the condition of Depot Road. It's a D O T road. But from what I understand, the applicant has been in contact with S C D O T and could possibly work out some sort of arrangement with them because that was a concern of staff's is whether this road could handle all the traffic that would be generated from this request. Also included in your packet was their submission to D Heck and the approval for the mine. You could see on the graphic, this was submitted by the applicant as well. Where they are proposing the mining portion to go would be the it's hard, it's it's faint on the screen, but it's a red circle where the yellow pen is in the center of a site. From what I understand, it's around three and a half acres on the hundred and fifty acre site. And I know there some of the conservation groups in the area are also making sure that they stay on top of this and are listening in and may have some forthcoming comments to council on this as well. Also included in your packet, you may remember this, this came before council in fall of two thousand seventeen. So I included the minutes from that meeting as well, just to refresh your memory on what the comments were received at that time. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have. And like I said, Mr. McLean's on the call also.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. McLean, is there any information that you'd like to add relative to the the road itself and your communications with S C D O T?
Yes, we've been in contact with S C D O T as we were before, and we've agreed to enter into a to put a bond and and to make a road maintenance agreement for the road for anything that any damage that's done to the road, which is something we, you know, we've had to do before.
Thank you.
Yeah. And now keeping mind, I want the council to keep in mind that no traffic will be going left in front of the city park. All our traffic will because there's no way for a loaded dump truck to go over the Conway City Bridge. That will be in direct traffic violation with the transit police. So all we are proposing for all our traffic to come down Depot Road to New South and enter there. And this, this, as I said before, this will not be a mine that operates every day. This will be a this will be just kind of a special exception. If if there was a big project before when we came to you, there was a landfill project that we were proposing to supply the dirt for. But it won't be it won't be a mining operation that's open every day with constant truck traffic. It would be just for a specific use. And we, our previous request was for five acres and we downgraded that to three and a half acres.
Thank you so much. Mr. Goldfinch.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, especially when you're you're not making that left-hand turn and you're just taking a right out. I would submit, and I have no way of knowing, that Santee Cooper probably causes more damage, you know, with their facility there to that section of road than anything else. So that that doesn't bother me so much.
Yeah, I would. I would agree with you, Mr. Goldfinch, because Santee Cooper does, their trucks can go over the bridge in Conway. So they do use that road quite often all the way down, leaving their facility.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes, this question on what makes, well, first off, I guess, Jamie, do you have your permit from D Heck at this point?
We do. We do. We have our mining permit in hand from D Heck. We received it last, well, before the before the planning commission meeting. I can't remember. I think it was last week or the week before.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, what would make this different from what the county just went through with the mine out at Red Bluff? I think county had some some notices that would not allow the mining. And I think it ended up in federal federal court and ruled against the county. So I guess my question will be, you know, do we even have jurisdiction over over D Heck? Because my understanding from the county is that, you know, the on the on the county case that the federal court said that they they could not trump what D Heck had already issued on that permit.
And before we hear from Mr. McLean, let's hear from Mr. Emrick.
I can weigh on that one a little bit, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you.
Our ordinance is different than the county's. As I understand, the county's is they already have the zoning in place for that mine. And then there's a license on top of that that was issued by the county. In our case, our zoning requires you to have a flexible mining district attached to it. And D Heck, D Heck allows the local municipalities to control zoning for where mining can go. So we're not requiring a separate license for this mine. We're requiring the zoning to be appropriate as we go. Right now, you cannot mine in any, if I'm not mistaken, any district without this flexible mining district as an overlay. So the overlay is what's being applied here, not a licensing that would trump D Heck. So it's a little bit different. Our ordinance is different than than the other.
Mr. Hyman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a question for Jamie. I think I may have been on planning actually when this came through before. And I know some of the concerns at the time were about possible dangers and that kind of thing. And and I I've dealt with with mines before with clients and Jamie, I know you've, I know you, I think you've had one or two mines before this. Can you explain a little bit to council what D Heck requires once the mines are done? I know there's a grading technique and all of that for safety purposes.
Yeah, so so the procedure with D Heck is you come in, you get your you get your mining permit and you get your, you know, get whatever you need your zoning from the municipality. We would go and we would operate that mine. Our mines, we do a little bit differently than than most mines. We don't use diesel pumps. We use electric pumps, which significantly cut down on the the noise pollution from from the diesel motors. Once you dig the hole, Alex, you're exactly right. You have to slope and grade the land and establish seating, you know, on all banks for to close out the mine with D Heck. But now, while we're mining, we get inspections periodically from D Heck and make sure that we don't have, you know, any kind of debris laying around and, you know, we're following proper procedure.
Thank you both. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. White.
So thank you very much. There in that area, there's a lot of flooding whenever there's a big rain as it is now. How would you alleviate the floodiness on that road? Because you, if you had to come down from Main Street to that area, you can make that left turn and go there. And anyway, well, what would you do to help alleviate flooding in that area?
Well, I feel like the, Mr. White, I feel like the mine itself would help flooding because I mean, from from a standpoint of digging upon, I mean, every subdivision, you have to have a stormwater retention pond on it. So and that's what we're proposing basically is a three and a half acre fish pond. So that would not do anything to hurt it. Now, as far as the road, we couldn't actually do anything to help the road. But like I said, keep in mind, we would just be going from our property toward Depot Road, not toward the city of Conway there. So and and I do think that there's, you know, we were on the, if there is a so-called higher end of the hill, I think we would be on that. And the parcel that we're, the area that we're proposing to mine that you saw in that one slide is is a is a big pine hill. I mean, you don't you don't mind in the low wetland areas. I mean, it's a it's a pretty big hill in there is what we're proposing to mine.
Ms. Tims.
Yes, Jamie, would you talk a little bit about the fact that this sits in the middle of a big conservation district and what measures might be taken to be make it be compatible?
Sure. And and that is why we downgraded our proposed mine site to, you know, three and a half acres, thinking that it wouldn't take so long. And it would be no different. We could dig a three and a half acre pond, but we would be just spreading the dirt on the site there. And and we feel as though, I mean, a pond in a conservation easement is a good thing, you know. I mean, that's, I know it depends on what, you know, if you're gonna to put any kind of conservation easement or anything on the land, you can call out things that you're gonna do. Forestry practices, if you want to build a pond, if you want to put a house, you know, those type of things. And that's something that the nature conservancy and, you know, PD Trust, I mean, they're all okay with. They're just, they don't want you to have development.
I see. And the second part of my question is to Mr. Hendrick, Embrik, I suspect. Adam, would you please make certain that we are not in conflict of anything? We don't want to get in any kind of litigation that's already been settled.
As of right now, we're good. We ran this by the city attorney as well, and and we're we're on smooth sailing right now. We're following our protocols and as far as we know, they meet all requirements.
Mr. Hubbard.
Jamie, I wasn't on council last time that you applied for this, but I was at the meeting and I seem to recall there were some concerns and you did a really good job at addressing those. You talk a little bit about the some of the electronic monitoring that you have in place. And I believe you even said that D Heck had been in touch with you so they could bring their people and show them what a mine was supposed to look like.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, Shane. We have, we have a mine in operation that we are currently operating in out by the caution line on three seventy-eight, which is in the county, not not in the city. Um, we did, D Heck has came out, you know, we have been mining out there for ten years, have not had not one thing, one, any kind of red flag or any kind of violation from D Heck. We're on our tenth year and I mean, that's, that's, that's something to say. And we even had, like you said, we had D Heck ask us about coming out and doing a class, showing different techniques for the mining, the way we use the electric pumps and some of the more progressive things that we're doing out there. And they do, you know, a lot of people were worried about the city having to regulate the mining operation. The city doesn't have to regulate the mining operation. One called to D Heck in Myrtle Beach, Columbia, D Heck's, you know, calling me and they're out there. And I'm much more afraid of ruining my relationship with with D Heck because I mean, that's where their, that's where their teeth comes in. They have, we have to post a bond for the mine. So if we walk away, you know, they they can finish it and everything. So.
Well, I thank everybody for this robust discussion. Are there any other points that need to be made? Thank you, everybody. And this will come up before the council in June. Adam.
M C, what is the what is the schedule for the first reading?
June first is the schedule for the first reading. June fifteenth, I think, for the second.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. McLean.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for allowing me to join the meeting.
Absolutely. Item C on the on the agenda is a discussion on a request to annex one hundred thirteen and about a quarter acre is a property located on Skipper Road between Culture and Oak Streets, T M S one, two, three, zero, 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 two, zero, eight, three, and to request a rezone one hundred and five or so acres from Ori County Residential S F twenty to City of Conway Medium Density Residential R two and eight point nineteen acres from Ori County Residential S F twenty to City of Conway Neighborhood Commercial. Ms. Hyman.
Yes, I'm sure you're all familiar with this tract, but the intention is to develop the the larger portion of a single-family residential development. Therefore, they are requesting R two. With the corner triangular piece, they are requesting Neighborhood Commercial to do some sort of commercial development there. Tyler, if you could go to the next, I think it is the next slide, they are working, they have submitted plans. However, it's conceptual in nature at this point. It's still going through Technical Review Committee with staff now to make sure it meets all the city's requirements. But this at least gives you a little bit of an idea of what they're proposing. They submitted two different sketches. This is one sketch showing if it were approved as R two, what they could potentially do on the site. And the next slide shows they looked at the, if if it were to go forward with conservation subdivision ordinance, what could be done under that ordinance within the U D O. Also, the next slideshows are the future land use map that was recently approved shows the majority of the parcel is medium density residential with a little corner piece of the pink as Neighborhood Commercial. Doesn't line up exactly, but it does show that that when the community meetings were held and the committee was looking at the future land use map, that they saw some sort of commercial on that corner. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Ryan Harvey is also on the line. He is the applicant and agent and engineer for this project.
Thank you so much. Are there questions? Or comments? It appears, Ms. Hyman, that council is familiar enough with not only the plot, but with the plan as well, that that you've done a really good presentation. Ms. Tims, is there anything you'd like to add or ask?
I wanted to ask about the entrances and exits on this property. Culture Road is a if we could have Darlington five hundred there probably. And there's a lot of homes in there for limited entrances and exits.
Yes, and anything, any entrances and exits would have to meet. They require encroachment permit from S C D O T, and it would have to be approved by city staff, the planning department, Public Works Department. So that's something we'd have to make sure met all the appropriate ordinances. And as you can see, it only, the portion that they're looking to annex, it doesn't include some parcels that are on Culture and Oak now that are being developed in the county. So but like I said, they they would have to to meet all appropriate ordinances as far as that was concerned.
I was having a little trouble with the map that it's really busy and I can't tell what's where and what size lots these are supposed to be and where they are to. I mean, there's a lot on here.
If the R two zoning is approved, the width, the the minimum lot width for R two is fifty feet and the depth would be a hundred and twenty. So they would, if R two was approved, that is the the lot size that would be required as the minimum.
And Ms. Hyman, is it safe to assume that because Culture Road is described by Ms. Tims as a is a very busy two-lane road, that there would be limited entrances from the development onto Culture Road? I mean, is there any way you can guess at it?
I can take that. We're actually not proposing any entrances or exits on the Culture Road. The existing lots that have been subdivided by the landowner would be just single-family residences with with driveways on Culture Road, but the major subdivision wouldn't have any at all on Culture.
Would you maintain that street that exists or the former unofficial road that came from Oak Street extension to Culture Road?
No, ma'am. We've actually already talked with the county. They don't have any problems with closing that road permanently. That Skipper Road.
Yes.
We would actually line our main entrance up with Meadowland Parkway. So we would have two exit lanes, one going right, one going left or straight. And then we would also be proposing a left turn lane on Oak Street to turn into the development. And then our secondary access would be further down Oak Street. So if you look by lots two oh one, two oh one and two twenty-eight, that would be our secondary access down to the south. And then our main entrance would be where it says phase one, phase two, right by lots. Yeah, right there, that's the main entrance. It would line up with the crossroad. And we would have a left turn lane on Oak turning into there.
Thank you so much. Mr. Jordan, I think I saw your hand. Am I mistaken?
He answered my question about the entrances there. So that was where I was at.
Are there any comments, other added comments or questions? There being none, we will take this up when it's presented for public for There being none, uh, we will take this up when it's presented for public, um, for public input and, I'm sorry, public hearing and for our first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move forward now to item six, which is public input. Madam clerk, have there been any, has there been any input, um, provided by the public that you should present at this point?
Yes, ma'am. I had, the first one I have is a letter concerning the rezoning at sixteen sixteen Sixth Avenue. It is from Zenobia Steel. She lives at sixteen oh four Sixth Avenue. She asked, uh, she received a letter concerning the rezoning of the property. She thanks you for giving her the opportunity to express her concern. During the time the gas station was open, I experienced the following. Amount of trash in yards, loud talking and people walking late at night, cars speeding down the street, someone was killed between the gas station and my home. These events are the reasons I would not like a business in this area. I believe this would cause increased safety concerns for our community. The next one I have, um, is actually a letter from, um, O'Leary about the rezoning, uh, I'm sorry about, yes, rezoning on Depot Roads. There with me, it's, it's a long letter. Um, with respect to communicating information using flood maps, there is a concern that while firms are produced to implement IP regulations and requirements, they have become the primary source of flood risk information available. The concern with the special flood hazard area boundary is how it leads to a false perception that outside the boundary, people are safe and that inside the SFHA, the risk is uniform. In reality, flood risk varies continuously across the landscape. Most people are not aware that in a thirty year period, there is a twenty-six percent chance that the hundred year flood level will be exceeded. Flood claims data throughout the county between nineteen seventy-eight and two thousand and twelve showed that roughly thirty percent of claims were for properties outside SFHAs. And storms, including named hurricanes like Florence, all led to flooding that extended beyond the SFHA and generated flood depths that exceeded BFE by several feet. Residual risk is not communicated that in the firms. The Technical Mapping Advisory Council has suggested that FEMA move forward to structure specific depiction of risk as opposed to the simplistic message of being inside or outside of the SFHA. Although this recommendation applies to the federal agency that regulates these high risk areas, the city can and should exceed the federal standards to provide more public safeguards and communicate the true risk of flooding to its citizens. The BFE serves only as a minimum requirement representing a standard size event in order to manage flood risk for determining insurance rates. The value of the hundred year BFE as a minimum requirement for all classifications of structures should be challenged and questioned. The city should be communicating and preparing for the true risk of flooding rather than an arbitrary nationwide probability of exceedance. For example, the hundred year flood has a twenty-six percent chance of occurring over the life of a thirty year mortgage. Designing for a seven hundred year event would reduce this probability, probability to a four point two percent chance of occurring over a thirty year mortgage. FEMA and A S C E publications recommend elevating infrastructure above the five hundred year flood. Where feasible, all infrastructure should be constructed outside the five hundred year flood plain. Riverine areas like the city of Conway are also facing an increasing risk of flooding. A FEMA commissioned study found many inland flood plains could expand in size by forty-five percent by twenty twenty-one. Which would in turn greatly increase the number of vulnerable properties. Currently, these changing flood dynamics are not taken into account. The city may choose to locate the development in areas that appear safe from flooding today, but will be facing a serious flood risk tomorrow. Therefore, the city should ensure that we are adopting flood maps that include an informational layer that depicts future conditions, including accounting for the impacts of climate change. One of the most important parts of the NAI approach is accurate maps and related flood hazard data that can provide information needed to determine if others are adversely impacted by a proposed development project. FEMA's map represents the government's best estimates of flood plains. They hold a lot of power and when a parcel is not included on FEMA's magical map and its residents aren't required to buy flood insurance, this leads to risky investments and tragic consequences. It is vital that the city of Conway work to provide public safeguards by exceeding federal minimum standards and provide information about the true risk of flooding to its citizens. Adopting a new flood protection standard would provide long-term cost savings. Pre-disaster mitigation efforts, which include building to a more protective standard against flooding, are proven to reduce the cost of post-disaster recovery. Ori County Rising would like to recommend for this council to consider no adverse impact guide to flood mapping published by the Association of State Floodway Managers. The NAI how-to guide for mapping describes what is needed for accurate and useful maps that can support an NAI program. Seven factors are advanced for communities to follow to improve their mapping program and products. Take responsibility for mapping your hazards, know your mapping shortcomings, think beyond the hundred year flood, map your, your known flood hazards, account for the unknown, coordinate with the community programs, educate the public. And that is the entire letter.
Thank you. And is that the entirety of the public input that you would be able to, to add at this time?
Um, I'm going to add that she also asks that. Nope, that's it. We're good. That was all we had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Tessier. Item eight, I'm sorry, item seven, public hearing and first reading. Item A is public hearing and first reading ordinance Z A twenty twenty zero six zero one A in ordinance to rezon approximately thirteen hundredths of an acre of property located at sixteen sixteen Sixth Avenue, TMS one, three, seven, zero, one, three, four, zero, one, one, from City of Conway Medium Density Residential to Highway Commercial. Ms. Hyman.
Yes, and council may remember this. It was discussed back in, I guess, February now, uh, at, at a workshop. But this request, there's an existing, um, gas station and convenience store facing Highway five oh one. And the owner has purchased the property behind it with the intention of combining it with the existing store so that in addition can be built onto the store. But with that, the parcel is zoned R two residential. So in order to combine and therefore build on this portion of the property, it would need to be rezoned to match the, the existing zoning next door, the highway commercial. This is the most recent plan that city staff has received. I double checked this. We, we just received this, I think, last week. The, the addition was inadvertently left off of this and we've reached out to the, to the applicant on that. So they're going to, to make sure they fix that with the next submittal. As you can see, they're planning, uh, an addition that's not shown on this now, but they also would have the addition of landscaping in the back as well. The applicant, uh, and owner of this property, Mr. Patel, is also on the line and can answer any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, this is a public hearing and I would ask that when you open a public hearing, that you consider the first comment made during public input to be related to this item?
Absolutely. Uh, that, that piece came from, um, Ms. Zenobia Steel. Is that the reference that you made?
Yes, ma'am.
And how will we receive additional, uh, public input?
Every, I think there's a public hearing scheduled for this at the next reading as well, due to the, kind of the confines of the, of the circumstances that we're in. So anyone from the public has the ability to make either a voicemail call to our clerk and leave a message up until noon of the day of the meeting, which was noon today, or noon, June first for the next meeting. Or they can submit their comments in writing, either by letter or by email to, uh, btesier@cityofcomway. Or for the next meeting on June first, we intend to meet in person at Public Safety Building and members of the public can come to that building at sixteen hundred Ninth Avenue and make their comments in person during the public hearing at that meeting. I will say we have limited capacity during that meeting, so we may have to do some staging of, of public entering and leaving, but we will figure that out as the, as the meeting presents itself.
Thank you so much. I, I just needed that repeated. Because, uh, this is a, a very sensitive subject to many of our residents. I wish I had taken an exact toll. My guess would be that I have spoken to between nine and eleven individuals who, uh, live or attend church, uh, in the immediate vicinity of this, of this property that proposes to be a, a convenience store. The totality of those people have all indicated, um, a, a sharp concern, uh, that, that not open as a convenience store. Because of that, I would move that this council defer first reading until our next meeting. Um, I, I think we just need the ability to have, uh, people come in person uh, and speak to the concerns that they have and that the, and that this council hear those concerns. Mr. Goldfinch, was that your hand? You're muted, Mr. Goldfinch?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Now we do.
Is there, y- y- you do make a great point. I've gotten some, I've gotten some, some feedback from three people, uh, who've reached out to me on this. And I do know, we talked about this in a workshop some months ago. And I believe the police chief, Chief Long, has, has looked into this and done some research. And I think, um, you know, if it's okay with the applicant, I'm, I'm sort of on the same page with you to maybe defer this, um, because I think there's education can help, you know, allay some concerns that some folks have and that might, well, that definitely would be done easier in a, in a public thing, uh, as opposed to zone.
Thank you. Does, Mr. White?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, thank you, mayor. I concur with you as well that this be deferred.
Thank you. So is, uh, would either of you make that a second to the, the motion? That's it? Thank you, Mr. Goldfinch.
Yes, okay.
We have a properly seconded motion to defer first reading until we are meeting again in person. And now I'll open the floor for discussions. Mr. Goldfinch.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I do recall at the, um, workshop with some time ago on this, Mr. Patel, the gentleman who's got this, uh, the store, um, also has some other stores that he operates. And I just, um, would, I know there have obviously been some concerns. There's been a lot of issues, uh, in the past. Can we get, I mean, I'm assuming Chief Long will be at the next meeting, uh, just, just to have him sort of give some, some testimony, for lack of a better term. Is there what he's found out, um, and, and can sort of share that with, with some of the community in and around, uh, this store, uh, there on Sixth Avenue?
We'll have him there, yes.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Larry.
Yes, Mr. White.
Um, that is in my neighborhood, if you would, and that's where, um, we, most of the people that live on that street are seniors. Uh, and they don't need another beer, wine joint in the neighborhood. There are three of such, um, businesses within two block area. And then this one is right in the midst of churches. When it was open prior to, um, the people, the pace, the, uh, patrons would have go into that store, purchase goods and then go next door to the church property and sit on the church steps and drink their beer, wine, whatever. And I don't think that's conducive to this area. Um, those folks, um, have dealt with this. And just recently, there's another church that opened up on the other side of five oh one. And we, we just don't need all of that there in that community. And I apologize to the, um, business person, but, um, you need to live in the area to feel what I'm feeling for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, unless there are other comments, I'll just, um, bring, ask for a vote. All in favor of a deferment of first reading until we can, uh, have a typical, uh, face-to-face public hearing, please indicate with your hand, either hand. Thank you so much. And I believe that motion carries unanimously. Item B is public hearing and first ordinance of Z A twenty twenty zero six zero one B in ordinance to rezon approximately five and a third acres located at one ninety-eight Long Avenue, TMS one, two, three, one, zero, three, three, zero, zero, seven, from City of Conway Residential R one to Planned Development District. Ms. Hyman.
I guess, as you all know, we've discussed this one also previously. The church has been vacant since it suffered flood damage after Hurricane Florence. In addition to the renovations due to this flood damage, the church is also working on additions to the building. And because of the footprint of the building, it is expanding, rezoning to a planned district is required to bring it into compliance with the UDO. The way that the UDO is written, churches or religious institutions are allowed in R one. However, when it's, uh, is on a property that's greater than three acres, it's required to be zoned planned district. Um, this is because generally larger churches like this, um, have uses that extend beyond the church and the parsonage, uh, which could be daycares, playgrounds, family life centers, gymnasiums. So the UDO calls it out that these larger parcels, uh, rezoned to PD. So this is just a request to bring it into conformity with the current UDA.
And Ms. Hyman, if you will, please just name the church. I don't believe, for the public record, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Trinity Methodist Church on Long Avenue.
Thank you.
And Mr. Pat Henry's on the line as a representative from Trinity.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. Henry. Again.
Be here. Mayor, may I just tap on my first privilege? I wanted to say, um, on behalf of Trinity that, uh, we appreciate what the city has done to help us through this, uh, crisis that we've had. And especially Mayor Catherine Hyman has been a source of help and information. And I just wanted to say how much we appreciate the city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, um, and, and I believe, Ms. Tessier, you have not indicated that you received any input from the public via the, the methods that are in place now.
Nothing on this one.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, is there a motion then to approve first reading of this ordinance? Mr. Goldfinch?
Mayor, I have moved that we approve, uh, first reading of said ordinance.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Tims.
I second his motion.
We have a properly seconded motion then to approve, um, first reading of the said ordinance. Uh, is there anything to be added? I've seen a hand from Mr. Jordan, Mr. White, and now Mr. Hyman. Or are the, are those votes already?
Mayor, that was a vote from me. Vote as well.
All right. So all in favor, if you would, vote at this time with a showing of your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is item C, public hearing and first reading of ordinance twenty twenty zero six zero one C, amending the code of ordinance says title five, chapter two, flood damage prevention standards to adopt the two thousand and nineteen revised preliminary flood insurance rate map. Uh, the acronym is FARM and remove the existing regulatory flood, flood plane described there. And, Mr. Cooper.
Mayor and camp, council on August, uh, August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, FEMA updated the preliminary flood insurance rating maps. With their, with this revision, the new elevations is actually higher than the Matthew High Watermarks. Therefore, therefore causing the Matthew area, Matthew area to become obsolete. In addition, there are two differences that occur between these two maps, including the location of the special flood hazard area and the base flood elevation in those special flood hazard area. To reduce inconsistencies and to adopt the most current information, staff recommends that the city adopt the twenty nineteen revised preliminary firm maps and absorb the recorded high water marks from Hurricane Matthew.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I may, um, this is a public hearing also.
Yes.
You take the second piece of public input that was reported earlier. After you take the second piece of public input that was reported earlier from April O'Leary and apply it to this, this, this matter.
Yes, and, and that is the case. We will accept Ms. O'Leary's input as having been a piece of public input. And I believe that she is the only person who has spoken to this matter. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I didn't officially move that public input be closed in the other matters, and that's simply because our input is limited to what has been previously spoken to. And then I'll guess I'll start now. What is the will of the council relative to the new, the new flood maps and the new flood zones? Mr. Goldfinch?
Mayor, I would move that, I'm sorry, I got, I apologize. My office phone was ringing and I got distracted. Are you calling for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I move that we approve the, the new flood maps.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tims, I believe.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a properly seconded motion to approve the new flood zone maps. Is there a discussion, Mr. Mr. Emrick?
Before you, before you vote, to, to sort of piggyback on what Ms. O'Leary said in her, her letter, we, we do not want people to be complacent just because they do not live in a flood zone. The flood zone are the high-risk areas. That does not mean you're in a no-risk area to have no flooding, and which we saw in Hurricane Florence. So just, you know, this is not the only places that are going to flood in the city if we flood again. These are the highest-risk places that must have flood insurance, not the places that need to have flood insurance. So if, I've said it before, I've said it a million times, if, if you could see water during Hurricane Florence, you probably should go out and buy some flood insurance, because you might see more water next time. And next time is what we are always counting on here and go.
Thank you for that valuable input, Mr. Emrick. Mr. White, I believe your hand was raised earlier?
I was going to second this.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any other comments, any further discussion? There being none, we'll call this to a question. All in favor of accepting the new flood map, please indicate with your showing, a showing of your hand. And this motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you so much. Item D, public hearing and first reading of ordinance Z A 2020 0601D, a request for the closure of an unimproved 20-foot private alley between properties owned by Rebecca and Andrew Cook, TMS 1231308012, and Sylvia and Joshua Hudson, TMS 1231308013. Ms. Hyman?
Yes, this request is to close this alley between these two properties. The two property owners intend to each take a portion of that alley and combine it into their respective yards. So each property owner would receive 10 feet. You can see on the attached, on the survey showed that alley. If you go to the next slide, it will show, this is the view of that alley from 16th Avenue. So as you can see, it's never been historically used for access. The next slide shows the view from Pinewood Circle. You can also see there, there's trees and bushes and shrubs within this alley. So you would never know that it was there. And historically, these property owners have been maintaining it as if it were a part of their yard also. Davis and Abnett is the attorney representing this, and he's on the line also if you have any more specific questions.
Thank you. Now, based on the reading of public input from Madam Clerk, there have been no comments made relative to this decision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, thank you. I believe that we're ready then to hear from Mr. Hyman.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the request for first reading.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Mr. White?
Second, I'm sorry.
Properly seconded motion to approve the ordinance to close this pathway. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all in favor with a show of hands, please. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item eight, first reading of ordinance Z A 2020 0601E in ordinance to annex approximately almost two acres of property located at 2593 Long Avenue Extension, TMS 1230002067, and request to rezone from Ori County Residential to City of Conway Low to Medium Density Residential District. Ms. Hyman?
Yes, this is an exist, there's an existing single-family home on this property that recent, recently changed ownership. They already have city water, but they make, they could get sewer in the future. But since it was contiguous to the city limit, and they were requesting a new water service under a new name, they brought an annexation request forward.
All right, then, to me. What is the will of the council? I would move then that we approve first reading of this ordinance. Is there a second? Mr. Jordan?
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. We have properly seconded motion, pardon me, we have a second, properly seconded motion to approve first reading. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. White.
It, it looks like there is a, a small piece of land in the green area there, trees between those two lots. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, that is a separate parcel.
Now, does that belong to either of those people again, like just the previous issue?
It doesn't belong to the, this property owner. I'm not sure exactly who that, but I could look it up.
And, and my reason for asking was that if, if it was going to be an issue, that later on, they wanted to divide that land up between the two.
That parcel is privately owned right now by, by neither individual. So it would not need to be abandoned by this council. It would have, it could be sold by, on private market.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have properly seconded motion then to approve first reading of, of this ordinance. All in favor with a show of hands, please. I see from everybody but Mr. Hubbard. Mr. Hubbard, is your intent to vote yes or, or not? And you're silenced right now. And I just need to be able to.
I voted yes.
Thank you so much. So the vote is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. All right. So item nine, items for consideration. The first is a consider, or the only one, is a consideration of requests from the Conway Chamber of Commerce for reappointment of grant funding allocated to Riverfest special event. Mr. Williams, Ms. Williams?
Yes, William. Thank you.
Hi, I'm so sorry. Allison Williams, yes.
The, the chamber receives money annually from the city to support Riverfest. Unfortunately, due to the uncertainty of current events, they have chosen to cancel this year of Riverfest. And in place of that, that would like to use funding for fireworks display on July 4th, as well as to support local business marketing campaign. And this money is from accommodations tax fund, so the reinforcement will need to be conditional on laws that are outlined in your issue paper. I have Kelly James on the line as well, if you have any questions for her.
Thank you so much. Mr. Goldfinch?
Allison, what, what does that amount? I don't have that in front of me that we, that we do that.
It said 7,500 from accommodations tax and 8,000 hospitality tax.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that, that we do that. The fireworks, obviously, pretty self-explanatory. Can we get a sort of an itemized breakdown, though, from Kelly of the other sort of business building activities or whatever it was?
Yes, we already, we're working on that marketing plan now, and I provided a draft to Allison already. But yes, I can absolutely provide that one finalized. Thank you.
Allison, can you give us an overview of how those, the two programs, there's two programs here. It's not just a marketing campaign for the fireworks. There's also a sep- separate marketing campaign for Shop Local. And I think what they're doing is splitting those out into two budgets. I think Allison has that. Hopefully she has it handy, putting her on the spot, has that split out. And that might be enough information for council to be able to consider.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll be happy to, Adam. Basically, the $7,500 in accommodations tax would be to the benefit of marketing the fireworks on the court. And then the $8,000 in the hospitality tax funding is the one that we would put towards the Shop Conway marketing plan. And those would be itemized out.
Thank you so much. I believe Mr. White was going to chime in.
Second motion.
Okay, thank you so much. We have a properly seconded motion to approve the use of these accommodations taxes and hospitality tax monies for a display of fireworks and a Shop Conway campaign by the Chamber of Commerce. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all in favor of approval, please show your hand. All right. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Moving forward, next on the agenda is item 10, the city administrator's report. Adam?
Bear with me while I switch pages here.
Sure.
All right. Thank you all again for what I think is our 700th Zoom meeting, and hopefully our last. But I look forward to our next meeting in June 1st, when hopefully we can be, all be in the same room together and very distance from each other. First, I want to give you a numbers update on COVID-19. We are at 63 currently, and our two Conway zip codes through yesterday afternoon. I, although I have a statewide update today, I do not have the, the local update. It just, it just came out. I haven't seen it yet. You can see as a county, we're still climbing and have not leveled out. But as a city in the two zip codes, we are still fairly flat. We're going up, but not in any sort of exponential lean on the curve there. Secondly, we have statewide updates, and we are tracking this by week, not by date. And, and the reason for that is the individual trending data per date is, is all over the map. But when you look at it in weekly total totals, you can sort of see where we are in a, in a consistent pattern. And that pattern is consistency. We are exactly the same as, as we have been in each of the last seven or eight weeks, which is both good and bad. We're not, we're not catapulting to the top, and we're not dropping, which is the bad part. The good news is that we are testing statewide in a dramatic amount more than we have been. And the result of percentage positive is dropping dramatically with that. We were having about a nine to 12% positive test result in those previous weeks, and that has dropped down to about two or three percent. So we're seeing about the same number of positive tests regardless of the number of tests that are taken cumulatively. So that's encouraging. The weekly numbers being consistent is not as encouraging. And what that tells us is that we need to still use caution and still not be, not, not return to normal as normal was and, and sort of, you know, keep things, doing things better. One of the things that we're working on to allow us to reopen to the public is to allow for more room in our finance department to socially distance as we reopen. Our business licensed staff of three shares one office space, and our, our billing staff has four or more sharing their common space. That building has been closed to the public and using their drive-through now for the last several weeks. One thing we're working on to be able to reopen that building is to give them more space. And we're actually looking at the, the small building next to City Hall to add some very small temporary offices for our human resources department to move into and allow some of, some more spacing for the finance department. So if you see some, some two-by-fours going in or out, that is why. If anyone wants a tour of that building during construction, feel free to come by and see it. Today, we opened the tennis courts, basketball courts, our dog park, and our rec fields to individual play with social distancing in place. Our public buildings are still closed, as I mentioned, including our public restrooms, but, and our playgrounds remain, remain closed under governor's order. Our recreation center is also closed. However, we do hope to open that, the rec center with reduced capacity and, and many changes to incorporate social distancing on June 1st. So our, our open date is June 1st. It is allowed to open today. We just simply are not ready with staffing as of right now. We're bringing back some of those employees that were laid off, and we're getting ready with, with some of those repair, some of those infrastructure things that need to be done to, to allow for people to circulate and allow for spacing. On June 08th, we hope to open our summer camps and, and maybe some team sports for practice, although social distancing in team sports is very difficult. We're following as many guidelines as we can from, from both the state and from individual sporting leagues and things like that to, to make sure that we're doing all that can be done to follow guidelines. The, the summer camp is important, number one. We have a lot of employees citywide that cannot go back to work because they have no place to put their kids. Daycares are closed, schools are closed. The summer camps are that avenue for a lot of people to get back to work. And we are confident that by following guidelines that are set forth by the state and by different professional organizations, that we can provide that summer camp service to our citizens and allow some people and families to get back to work. When we do open, it will not be like we've done in years past. It will be done in a different way to be safer and allow us to be safe for our employees and allow us to be able to treat children and their families with, with safety as well. A lot of the field trips that we pre-formally took will be canceled. We can't go to Merle Wave. We can't go to Pirates Voyage of Medieval Times. Those places are not open, and we cannot safely travel to those places. So we'll be looking for some more creative internal outlets for our summer camps as, as we move forward. We have had a few questions about the historic marker for the Whittmore School. This marker was found laying on the ground on Highway 378, next to where our sign crews were pouring the wayfinding sign footer. The wayfinding sign company took it back to Charlotte with them and attempted to fix it, and were not able to do so. It is now back in Conway with our shop. We are going to try to fix it, but it is cast metal, and welding cast metal is what I've been told virtually impossible. So it may not be possible to fix. So if it is not possible to fix, we'll explore options with council and with the, the group that put it, put it up initially to, to find a new way or new avenue of putting something up to, to recognize the, the historic Whittmore School. As I mentioned, the June 1st council meeting will be held at Public Safety Building and not via Zoom. We are also working on a way to stream this, this meeting as well. Right now, we're using Zoom as the platform that streams through to YouTube. We think we can, we figured out a way to stream directly to YouTube and the access channel and not utilize the Zoom, the Zoom platform. So hopefully, June 1st comes off smoothly, and we're in person, and it works great. And we'll tell you, the agenda is a very lengthy one. So be prepared for a long meeting and bring your caffeine and feed it. Tonight, beginning at 8:00 PM, we are working to repair a valve leak on Church Street near Burger King. We don't believe it's a major leak until we dig and see how bad it is. We won't know for certain. We hope to have it completed by 2:00 AM. We will have traffic control measures in place to protect our workers and protect travelers. And there are four businesses in the area that will be affected by the water shut-off. They've been notified and are prepared as well. And finally, we are grateful that the Ori County School Board and our Conway Schools have found a way to appropriately honor our graduating students. The city will also honor our graduates, and if all goes planned, it will start on Tuesday of next week. We are very hopeful that that will, that will be the date, and we'll release more information, I think, as, as we put it out. I think it's important that it becomes sort of a surprise, but not maybe too much of a surprise. And, and Mayor, if you'd like to reveal it in your input, you're welcome to do so, but I don't feel comfortable doing so now. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Administrator. I'm going to call on council in the order in which I see you on the screen. So just be prepared. William, I get to tell you, you're last this time. So we're going to start with Alex Hyman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief, and then I'll defer my, my rest of my time to you. I, 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 I'm definitely happy to see us slowly opening and kind of getting back to normal, if, if there is such a thing. I, I've spoken with a, a lot of people in the community concerning the outdoor dining with restaurants that we were doing.
that we were doing prior to the governor making all restaurants able to open. And there were so many people that talked about how nice that was. And maybe that can be something that we as a city try to embrace more. But other than that, just looking forward to seeing you guys in person rather than through a Zoom meeting. But like I said, just happy that we're starting to get back to a little bit of normalcy.
Thank you so much. Next is Ms. Tims.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment that I want to make. This past week, I received a call from an older citizen in Conway that was concerned that many of the older citizens are not receiving information that they need. They are sheltering at home, they feel more alone than they ever have, and they don't seem to have access to information. Most of that is due to the fact that they don't use Facebook, they don't, so they don't use computer services. They can't go to the City of Conway website or anybody else's for that matter. Now, that truly is a problem that is unique to them, but these people are our citizens, no matter what they use and don't use. And I would like to ask that we find some way to reach out to them such that they feel more connected. They mentioned the fact that they, of course, read the Independent, but they would like to see a write-up from this, from us and they're not from reporters about us. They mentioned the fact that they would like to see something on the access channel. And I think we've been on the access channel to some extent, but if there could be some type, Mayor, like the videos that you do on Facebook, would, I think they're on the access channel, but if they could be at a designated hour, so they don't have to sit there and wait on them to roll around, that would be helpful when you're doing you, and then you could, you know, bring a little feeling of connectivity to them. I think that's what people have missed the most in this time is the fact that they do feel isolated even more than they probably should. So that's something I would like for us to take to heart and try to make some efforts to correct, because they are citizens, and more than that, these people are voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tims. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo what Mr. Hyman had to say as far as seeing things get to what our new normal may be. I'm not sure if we ever know what that is, but, and then also about the outdoor dining. Again, I received a lot of calls about that and, you know, a lot of positive feedback on that and enjoyed it myself. So hoping that maybe we can, can find a way to explore that in the future as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hubbard, Mr. Hubbard, before you begin, may I ask you, Mr. Mayor, for Tim, if you would do the invocation at our June 1st meeting, at our first meeting in June?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And as far as council comments.
Yes, please.
Everything's been well said, and I'll give Mr. Goldfinch my time. He has a lot to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Goldfinch.
Oh, I thought I was going last. I thought it was Mr. White.
Yeah, you are, you are. He's just, he's just saving that time. You'll still get to use it. Mr. White? Mr. White, you're silenced.
Oh, Lord, thank Jesus. Here we go. Few things. When our meeting on June 1st, and it's supposed to be at the Public Safety Building?
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, just a comment, could we not have that rec center because there's more space as well as parking? Because the Public Service Safety Building is very limited parking there. If you have a good crowd, you know, you're quite a good part. Secondly, just a comment. Now that we are open, who is going to opening, who is going to enforce the social distancing? Last Saturday, Friday night, I think it was, I had a call from a citizen about the bowling alley, and that was overflowing with folks. And do we have a, what's going to happen if they continue, not just them, but anybody? If they continue to have no respect for the social distancing? Who's going to do, you know, is it going to be a fine or something or what?
What we did, what we did on Friday night was we sent the police out, and they did some counseling with that business. And they're required to have a count at all times. So if we shut off, and we say, how many do you have in your building? They need to have that number immediately handed. If they don't have that, they're not following the governor's orders. So that's, that's number one, and our police are doing a good job enforcing that. Our fire department also has the ability to enforce it from a fire code standpoint. Additionally, if it's a repetitive thing or if it's flagrant, SLED is called in to investigate. It is a violation of the governor's orders that we have the ability to enforce, but it is the requirement of SLED to also enforce. So if it becomes an issue bigger than what we can handle, we will call SLED in. And usually, we'll report it to SLED anyway because they're tracking occupancy violations as well.
Um, also about the employees in these businesses. Are they being protected by any form of measure, you know, measures like, um, with masks? Are we taking temperatures of people that are coming and things of that nature? How are they being protected, the employees?
For private businesses, there are no requirements that any of that is done. There are guidelines that they're supposed to be following. They're not enforceable by us. They are, like Walmart is not required to have masks, Food Lion's not required to have masks. I think it's encouraged, but is not required. So there are nothing, there's nothing like that that we can enforce from that standpoint. For our own employees, when we reopen to the public on June 1st, we will have masks available, and that will be optional, the employees' option. We'll have them available to use, but we'll require it so that it's there if people want to use them.
Did you? I'm sorry. Did you say our employees as well?
That's correct. Right now, we're still, we're very social distanced. We have a lot of people still working from home. But as we bring people back, they will have the option to have that protective gear available if they want it. We have it available for them.
Okay, thanks, sir. Last one is about the Saveway Gas Station on 6th Avenue. Could we inquire with the gentleman about cutting the grass to make it look presentable since it is on a major highway?
Yes, that can be done immediately.
And the campers, I'm sorry, I have forgotten this one. The campers that, when you start camping, how would they be chosen to attend the camp? First come, first served, or what?
It's always first come, first served. We are hoping to be able to expand to two locations. So both Mary Thompson Center will be one camp, and one camp will be at the Recreation Center. And that will also allow us to separate age groups so that we don't have six-year-olds and twelve-year-olds. We have the ability then to give them better service within their age group, and that will also allow us to distance them as well. Alright, one point on the choice of the location for the next meeting is for, for a lot of what we do, we were, we need to have good Wi-Fi, good access. We don't have that at the rec center right now. And so that's why we chose the Public Safety Building. If it becomes an issue with the number of people as we go forward, we can look at another venue. We'll move the vehicles to make sure there's plenty of room for parking.
Very good. And I concur with Hyman and the others about the outside dining. I think to look to having that after the fact as well as whenever this virus starts to end, to let that be a common practice.
We'll make it, we'll make some orders, draft changes as quickly as possible. We'll get that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I took up some of your time, William. I'm sorry.
No, actually, you took some of mine. We'll let Mr. Goldfinch have all of his. Alright, thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Goldfinch.
Mayor, I know you've been waiting, all of you, all day to hear what I've got to say. And I don't have anything other than to say. I love y'all. I miss y'all. Stay safe and look forward to being back in person.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of things. I'm mentioning private citizens' names because I just want them a part of the public record. Couple of people have spoken to me about their interest in the future and being a part of some of our committees. I believe that Timmy Williams is developing, and I'm not sure the name, but it has to do with litter control and cleanup, getting some paperwork in place. But there is a Mr. Noel Ollinger, who is very interested when the right time comes upon us to be a part of that group. Similarly, as there is some development and hopefully some programmatic development for the former Whittamore Elementary School site, Dr. Jesse Brown from Coastal Carolina is very interested in being a part of that as well. Many of you will recall that in October, we approved an ordinance for naming privileges for fields and recreation rooms and ballparks and that sort of thing. And in that list, we had talked about medallions that might honor a life or an event or some special date that is more personal to our residents. I guess, Adam, do you have, could you give us a general sense of how long it might take to come up with a couple of scenarios on how, how this placement for medallions might work out? Maybe on the riverfront or another place? I'm having repeated requests from citizens. I got a sense generally that council thought that that was a good idea, but I just want us to understand better what it entails so that we can make some decisions about it.
You may need to refresh my memory, but the last medallion discussion I thought we had was about recognizing city councilmen. And we were holding on that one until the new City Hall was constructed. Is there?
Right. No, this is, this is completely separate. I've mentioned that a citizen, remember, talked about the marsh walk down in Merle's Inlet, and how it was just a, it was sort of like a memory walk, and people had an opportunity to purchase and place medallions. For the most part, it honored lives. It just talked about a citizen of an area who, whose life has ended. But somebody might choose to use a medallion to announce the date of an award or the date of some accomplishment, or just about anything that's personal, that would not only serve as a memorial opportunity for an individual resident or for a family, but would also become a means of raising funds for parks and recreation facilities and such.
Let me get with Ashley Smith and let us see if we can get our heads together and come up with some ideas and come back to you on that.
Right, and that's all I'm asking for right now. And my, well, I want to be, I want to make certain that I think staff, and I would, I would mention Jeff at this point. Jeff is our IT head, whose last name, I have to confess, I don't even know.
LaValley.
I'm sorry?
LaValley.
LaValley. That's why I didn't know. I probably couldn't pronounce it. But Mr. LaValley has turned the impossible into something that works. He's done it for people whose familiarity and whose comfort with high-tech is very slim and has made these meetings work, I think, relatively speaking, when you consider the people that he's dealing with. He has made it work in a really, really good way. And I just want to send a shout-out. We've had some hiccups along the way, and we've had reason to laugh at each other, there's no doubt. But for the most part, we have consistently had meaningful meetings that worked without too much upset. And I really want to thank him for that. My final comments have to do with our in-city business owners. I've heard from two business owners about how the city might give them a little, another perk. We can't decide to let people who have businesses in Conway become voters because that's outside the scope of what we get to determine. However, when you consider that so many of our business owners make huge investments in our area, spend most of their wake hours here in Conway, buy from other business owners, pay taxes and fees, purchase city services. Their importance to us is grand. And what I've been asked to consider is things like, could we relax some of the fees that they would have to pay? For example, for gym membership, for going to our rec center. When you consider that so many of our employees have the opportunity but don't take it, and many more of us actually pay a fee but don't take advantage of the membership at all. I don't know that that would be particularly costly to us. Another area that was brought to my attention is maybe in rentals throughout the city. Don't know how much and how involved looking at that would be, Adam, but I certainly would like to have a sense of what staff thinks about that based on whatever complexities come to mind, whatever revenue losses might come to mind. But just to, just to look at some relaxation or some broadening of opportunities beyond citizenry, beyond being a resident, but for, for the things that our business owners do for us as well.
I'll see if we can find any examples from other communities that have done something like that, and I'll bring.
Wonderful. That'd be wonderful. Thank you so much. And with everybody having had their say, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Goldfinch.
Before I make that motion, Mayor, I agree with you. Had a gentleman once tell me, he said, I quote, "The next time you run into a small business owner, thank the reason your residential property taxes." And so I am with you on that. Great idea. Mayor, I move that we adjourn this.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Mr. Hyman?
Mayor, I second.
Properly seconded motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor with show of hands, please. And we will adjourn if Mr. Hubbard says yes and Ms. Tims. We will have the unanimous vote of our council. And I still don't see anything from Mr. Hubbard.
Yes, from me, Mayor.
Thank you so much. It's unanimous. Take care of yourselves. Look forward to seeing you in person next time. Thank you.